We invite Darnell Mokman to step up to the microphone with comments about any of his interest in this conference, including again by saying your name and address. Thank you for the many comments in three minutes, which keep you made moving in time and fashion. Should you have any written materials you wish to share with the board? May I have Mr. Security Personnel who will deliver the materials to the Board Secretary for distribution to the board at appropriate time? The time spent in the hands of the Board Secretary would be considered part of your three minutes.
All right, Darnell Mokman, 110 Southeast Bryan Street, Ankeny. I'm here to talk about several things. One is your DEI and the importance of keeping your word, or what you guys spoke about when it came to DEI in the community. It seems like we need to start developing an habit of keeping our word. It builds integrity, respect. We're not keeping our word when it comes to DEI. And the results will always be worth more than the words, especially if there's nothing happening behind it. For me, the only reason for you to win a good people to do something about it, that's just one of them. I read the book, disappointed in the DEI part. I know y'all had West Run up in Canterbury, lot of money spent, and you gotta go back. And for me, the book, if I was the administrator, I picked up that book, can anybody tell me the definition of DEI out of that book? What's the question? Anybody can tell me the definition of DEI? Who's benefited from it? What's the commitment in the book?
The commitment for...
The commitment, how do we get there? What are we trying to accomplish? How do we get there?
Darnell, I have you on the agenda to talk about focus.
No, I'm talking about DEI, so you'll get to come back next time to talk about this?
I understand, it's just because it's not on the agenda for me to address that specifically. We did have a work session prior to this meeting.
Okay, well, let me finish, you ain't got to address it. There's no measurable goals in your book. You understand, so if you're not doing those first three, what are we doing? Because everyone spoke of what they think DEI should mean, whether they believe in it or not. That's not here, and that's not happening at all. Few people was offered to sit down and talk. Some people don't even know DEI can be used for them. So if you had that information in the book, don't you think that would be valid for the people who don't know what DEI is? Because at that point, you know the community hostage. Seems like poor don't want to bring you guys to vote. Either you think you guys are going to push back and say no, which if you go by what you guys say, that wouldn't be pushed back. But I'll come back and talk about it with you guys if I have to. I have no problem with that. Stop holding your community hostage. Make the answers. It's just an answer, it's just a no, it's yay or nay, and the community don't want it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, let's invite Haley Lee. Now, seeing Haley move on, Asa Hudman.
Asa Hudman, 827 Northeast Smith Street, Ankeny. Sub custodian for Ankeny Schools, the only Ankeny custodian. I'd like to, first off, thank the board for what you do. I always say, I don't work for the school board, there's no way I'd have 70,000 people complaining to me all the time. So I have to, first off, congratulate you and thank you for what you do. I'm here to talk about your PPMI, or the retention bonus you approved, meeting, for supposed to be for the 21, 22 school year. Now all of a sudden, it's 22, 23 school year. You have to work till June of '23 in order to get this retention bonus. I feel that's wrong, because during '20 and '21, we were literally dying. We lost custodians due COVID and stuff like that. That retention bonus should have been coming way back in May when the teachers got thirst. But I know the board was busy if you had other plans, you know? And they finally gave it to us, and then they cut it back. You know, it just seems like our people are crying, your classified people are crying for help. You're losing right away. You have 18 nutrition units up right now. You're probably down to five or six custodians. How many associates are you down? You know, it's just, we need to retain the people. I'd like to thank the superintendent, I see they did change it a little bit where, well, finally, if you work till at least December, you get your retention bonus there. The board approved my resignation as of December 31st, so I'm happy for that. And I'd like to thank the superintendent for all these stuff. I hope you luck. I think you got a lot of work with a lot of your staff to do, but I think you're doing a good job. And I'd like to thank Amy especially. You responded back to me on this letter for when we tried to get this retention bonus. I just feel it should be for the 21, 22 school year. Anybody can give your...
I've got paperwork that shows what their proposition is to us now. Clear one, and one that just came out. There it is. I was just gonna leave copies for the board, just for you to see what we're dealing with. I just feel personally that your people deserve this. The ones that put through COVID and did this, your teachers got $1,000 bonus to tell them if they're leaving early, besides the COVID bonus, or a $500 bonus if they told them, hey, we're not gonna stay around after this school year. We don't get nothing. The classified staff doesn't get anything. And we have it for 10 years that I've been here. So I'd like to thank you for all you do. It's a thankless job. Thank you too, Dr. Pruitt.
Thank you.
I want to start off by making sure that your online feed is working, because every time I come up here, it seems to not work. Technical difficulties, so I want to make sure that it's still working. Good. Okay, I'm standing here today 129 days after the GSA end of the year Drag Queen Show was brought to your attention, and 128 days after you sent an email explaining to parents that the school was made aware of the unauthorized performance that took place at the Ankeny High School. And the whole thing was under investigation. How are we 129 days later and 30 days into the new school year, and we still have not heard any kind of apology from you, nor have we heard a resolution on how you are supposed to make sure that this doesn't happen again on school grounds? Sarah and Joy, you guys ran your campaign on transparency. Where's the transparency in this? How are we going to entrust in you, the board members, to do what is right for us parents and make sure that the kids, to know what the, sorry, how are we going to entrust you and the board members to do what is right if you do not make it apparent to us parents the outcome of what the investigation was? I get that you could not disclose any discipline action that you took, if any, on your employees, but surely you can explain to us concerned parents what policies you have since then put into effect to ensure this never happens again. As you know, you have employees that have flat out violated several of your own policies, included but not limited to dress code, misuse of public property, inappropriate interactions with students, and several security violations. I mean, I cannot even enter a school to help with this classroom party or have lunch with my kids without a full background check. So please explain to me how this 21-year-old man, dressed the way he was, was allowed into our school. Seems to me that a man who identifies with the LGBTQ committee is not held to the same standards as me as a white woman who attended the Ankeny Drag Queen Show. I want to know, does this outfit make you turn your head? Does this outfit seem appropriate for anybody here to see? Because if this makes your head turn, if this pisses you off, then it should. Because this guy walked into our school doing the exact same thing.
Kimberly, Kimberly, can you address the board, please?
This is what the man dressed like in front of our kids. So if this makes your head spin, this pisses you off in any way, shape, or form, it should. Because I'm embarrassed to stand here in the outfit that I am in today, but I have a point to prove, and that is that this outfit should not be ever accepted in our schools anywhere. And unless you guys make a policy that forbids it, a child can walk into our school dressed this way. An adult can walk in here and do the same thing. An adult can get snuck through the back door and let in to do another performance like this unless you make a policy to stop it today. And this is what we need to do. We need to come together as a community and stop what just is happening, what's happening in our schools. This guy had no background check. Because he did, you guys saw this, you would clearly see he looks like Titanic water bird. He has blood all over his face, it's an easy Facebook text message, look it up. But this is okay? This is not okay. This is not okay for you to see, this is not okay for our kids to see. And I hope to God you guys do the right thing, and you put him into it, you make a public apology to us parents, who had to have our kids sit there and go through this? Because this is wrong. And I hope to God this goes viral, and people laugh at me for the outfit that I'm wearing today. Because they didn't laugh at the guy who wore it, they applaud him on. But that's wrong. No kid should have to be subject to this, and you guys shouldn't have to be subject to me wearing this. But the only way I think we can get through to you guys is by showing you exactly what you did. And that's what I'm here for. And I hope to God this can be, and we can work things out. And as for you, you don't talk to me.
Kimberly, your three minutes are up. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, next on, here we have Lori Lovstad.
Thank you. I'm here as a parent of four children, past and current in the district, three of whom have received special education services throughout the district. So the DEI component of the work that you do is very close to my heart, and it's close to 40% of our children's hearts as well, because 40% of our district's children identify as part of an underrepresented group, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual orientation, all of those things, socioeconomic status, that's 40%. That's not, that's not a minority in the true sense of what we think that. And so I'm just here to talk, and the first thing I want to do is thank you for these work sessions. Thank you for having these discussions in public. We appreciate that as a community, and I want to encourage you to continue to bring this even more into the public. I remember last year, the Equity Sessions that we had concerning what CRT was and wasn't in our district, and how the community could come together and we could collectively work on this. And I hope you can take the information and the assistance that you have seen in these work sessions and bring them out into the community. We would love as community members to meet together with you and to find out what you have, what are you learning from this DEI process, and how you can bring us into the process as well. Josh, thank you for your encouragement of transparency and communication. I think that's one of the most powerful things that a board can do, is share the actions that it's taking and be ready for whatever happens when those come forward. It's not always easy to make really hard decisions. I've been in your seeds. It's hard when people have really strong emotions, but really strong emotions can make really powerful things happen. And so I would encourage everyone to stay connected and to stay open to hearing from experiences that don't mirror our own. And I ask you to prioritize feedback from families in our district. Prioritize feedback from parents and families and students who are in our schools. Erin had a really good point when it came, part of your work session, about not letting these outside voices taint the process of what is happening specific to our district. We care, we care about our global community, but we care about our families in Ankeny. And by bringing that transparency in, is just really, it crosses all groups, racial groups, religious, ethnic, socioeconomic status, language barriers, special needs students. We have amazing special needs students, and we have amazing teachers. And as part of the Social Emotional Learning Strategic Planning Committee, one of the biggest things we identified was a lack of uniform and systemic application of our DEI processes, especially when it came to access to resources for our socioeconomic students, our special education students, our students with mental health needs. It depends on what school you're at, what resources you have access to, and what programs you have access to. And this DEI framework is going to give our district the systemic power to make sure that it doesn't matter what feeder you're in, it doesn't matter if you're in elementary school, middle school, high school, you will have the same access to resources. And that can only happen from a unified and systemic platform. It's not one person being a DEI director. It's not having a DEI champion in every building. It's layering accountability in our district. And that's what's going to make us do, go from great, from good to great to powerful. I know, Dr. Pruitt, I'm not saying your words right, you have them, but it's how we get better as a district.
Lori, the three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for this.
Good evening. I, where this meeting is live streamed, which is perfectly fine by me, however, I do not give permission to be recorded on your personal phone. Nope. I have to give consent. I do not give consent. Turn it off.
Waste more time, you're good.
Sister, you need to go to law school. I know there are people here this evening who are compelled to circle back around to topics addressed in past board meetings. Tonight, I want to be present and future-minded. Presently, we are all working together for our students to feel safe at school, being exactly who they are. For the future, we must be compelled to proactively work to create more safe spaces in our schools and continue to provide support for our staff and teachers. Focusing on the past and refusing to move towards the future does not allow Ankeny School District to be present and forward-thinking. I think it is critical for us to continue to do the hard work, be future-minded, be in the present, and work together to address current critical items like DEI and other items that are put before the board that are critical to the safety of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Walkie.
Turn it off. Turn it off.
Kimberly, can you, at this point, it feels like you're just doing it on purpose. Thank you. Not seeing Jason. Steve Doohan?
I would reserve my time for both sessions.
Understood. Yep, no problem. Sounds good, yep, 100%. Sorry about that. Yep, I just saw the yes on here, so. All right, Michelle Lindell.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lindell. I am from Elkhart. My son would have gone to Ankeny Schools, but because of your communist way of doing the COVID masking, I decided to not allow him to come to your schools. So that was money that you missed out, that would have come to you guys, and you are no longer allowed. I will not give you the power to have that over my children just because of the masks. But then we go into the books that you are allowing in the schools, and if you want to say that you're not doing it personally, then you need to be finding out who is putting these books into the schools, and they need to be fired. Because this stuff is not supposed to be what our children are learning in schools. Learning about how to masturbate by fifth grade with DEI and all of that crap, which you're liking to think is good for the community because it involves everyone, no. Our children are going to be learning that stuff from us and not from you guys. Also, the online junk, it's not on right now. You're not, you're not live streaming, but we are. And everybody's going to see that you guys continuously make it so that people can't watch these meetings. You're getting called out on that. Schools are overstepping. They should not be in our children's brains the way they are. I have children, two of them, who are part of this system that you guys have indoctrinated and groomed, and it's not okay. Your jobs are now on the line. We are coming for your guys' positions, because this is not acceptable in any way, shape, or form. You are turning our children against us. And then when they hurt themselves later, you say it's our fault, because we wouldn't be there for them the way that you think that we should be. But guess what? We are normally not given the chance until after they've already decided that they want to transition. This is not acceptable. Never in a million years would any of this be allowed in any kind of world before COVID. But guess what? We woke up to it, and we see what you're doing, and we're no longer going to allow you to have the power to do this to our children. That is all.
Thank you. That concludes the communication from the public. So we're going to move on to item seven, the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve and accept these consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion.
Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, item eight, information only, revenue expenditure report.
No formal report.
Just in the notes.
War packet.
Great. Anybody have any questions for revenue expenditure report? Seeing none. Move on to item B, board committee selection process.
I did get a few, a few questions from directors. Again, the board committee selection process is the board's process, and so the feedback that you provide will be used to make adjustments. And then the plan is to now take it to our policy committee for review. The one question that I did receive later, late this afternoon, was around the anonymous section of the process, and if having the names being anonymized was required, again, it would be, it would be based off of feedback from the board as far as how you would want to proceed, once we collect names and how the board would want to receive those names moving forward. And the question was around, my thoughts around it, it was just in an effort to be impartial and fair with regards to members of the community that chose to be part of or volunteered their time for a board committee. But I'll yield to the board's wishes.
So is, in your kind of thinking, it's anonymous until that person's chosen, and then when we vote on the selection process, we know who we're voting on? Or at some point, we're going to eventually have to know who they are, right?
If we ever voted on anyone, did we?
We have, so this is, this is part of the change. I mean, way back in the day, we did. No, we're not voting on anything tonight.
No, no, no. The process was, we each pick one, and then the rest are done by lottery. There is no us voting at any point.
Yeah, good, well, good point. If that's, I mean, if that's ultimately how it fleshes out, I don't remember off the top of my head, because as Dr. Pruitt pointed out, ultimately, it's our board, our committees to inform us, and you know, it's, the process has been a little lax over the last many years. I appreciate the effort to...
Oh, yeah. But you have a process.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, so again, I guess then in the lottery pieces of it, at what point, just do we reveal all that? I mean, how does that?
So if there is a lottery process, though, wouldn't we want the opportunity to say, like, I recommend these five, and then they go into a pool, right? Because I think we should have some transparency to who is applying for these, you know, and then there's like a swirl of questions, you know, like if they're already on a committee, does, you know, can they, we say they can't serve more than two committees, is that more than two committees on...
So individuals in our community that choose to apply to be on a board committee, originally those names were intended to be anonymized, and their applications given to board members, and then each board member would have the ability to choose one person, and then the remaining members would then be part of the lottery to fill in the remaining, the remaining members of the committee. However, based off of the feedback received today, on the table for the board to consider is, when we do receive those applications, if the board would prefer to be able to see the names along with the application, choose their person, and then the remaining be part of the lottery.
Maybe another point of clarification, too, is I'm not even confident I know what, you know, what's our membership of any particular committee supposed to be, you know, because sometimes we usually have less than we want. PSYAC's huge, and that process is in slightly different method and purpose, but you know, how many, how many seats are we saying are on any of these particular...
It says 12 to 15 on here.
Okay.
So these are, yeah, Amy's right, and these are just the, there's only two committees that inform the board, the policy committee, facilities, and finance. And these are just concerning those two committees, this policy.
Right.
Because they're informative for the board and advisory for the board.
So in theory, it'd be seven board choices and seven randoms.
Well, no, because we would have, we have administrative personnel within the meetings as well, so...
So we're counting them.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
So it'd be seven board choices from applicants.
All right, the best wording is wrong, because it says 12 to 15 committee members from the community.
The staff weren't included in those numbers. Just because we have to be...
Getting jumbled, all of our conversations about this, so...
I don't care either way.
Yeah.
I think the thought is we...
She's actually reading the document.
Yeah, she's got it. The thought is that we don't want it to be too big, you know?
But, go for it. But again, I think we have 12 to 15. If the board wanted to have it be nine to 11, or 11 to 13, I think it depends on the board.
Yeah, no, I was more thinking if we pick seven and there were, you know, 25 members, then the balance of the, in the random, it seems to be kind of backwards, but...
I think we're gonna more struggle to get to the 12.
I agree.
We're gonna have more people that are turning off.
I agree. I agree.
I'm all right with the size of it. I think given everyone's time commitments to be able to make something, having a larger group is okay.
Yeah.
But I'm, we're discussing communication and transparency and stuff, and I'm just not too keen on having the anon, I'm not gonna say it right.
Anonymized.
Yeah, there you go. It's been a very long day, I apologize. I never submitted my resume to any group without my name on it, and it just doesn't seem like a standard practice to start that now.
I think when, just the roots of this were being discussed, we're trying to come up with something that gave everyone a shot, if you will, or an opportunity to serve, you know? In some cases, there might be more, more than, you know, the space is allowed or whatever. It's kind of why I led off with the question, at what point do we kind of choosing, I had in my head we were voting, but at this point, we're not, which is fine. I don't, as long as we come up with a good process, I'm fine with that, but...
If this is an opportunity to have a discussion openly.
Yeah.
Share with the public what the process is, and then, again, get feedback from the board to inform what we present to the policy committee.
And this will have an opportunity to go to our policy committee as it stands and have some betting and some conversation, and then it'll come back to us, and we have opportunity to kind of interject again to just something to think about, I think, so...
I think another question that came up was around term of service. And so I think that's a question for the board, you know, one year, two years, what should that look like moving forward?
And just to clarify, at the beginning of this school year, parents could, and community members could, they got a survey for the committees that they were interested in. These two were not included in that, so...
Right.
And just to clarify then, do these two committees count towards like being part of two committees, or can a community member be on both of these committees? Or is that something for us to decide?
That's something for the board to decide.
What's the, sorry, what's the workload gonna be like if it's a one-year term for you guys? I mean, to go through all the applications, set that up, push that out for us, I mean...
I don't like... I don't like the one term.
No, because there's a learning curve and some continuity, so.
I'm on the same page with you. Typically, on a committee position, you want to, in my mind, at least a two-year term.
Right.
Because you're going to have, as you've all seen me struggle up here over the last three months, you have a learning curve. And it's, everyone learns differently on that pace. And if we want to value input.
And the flip side, right? Because we're also adding, trying to express what the commitment is so that when you do sign up and want to do this, there's an understanding that you have the ability and the capacity to do it because it's, these are important, you know? So I think it goes hand in hand. I don't know what a sufficient term is.
I think it would make sense to align, because the heart of reviewing this process, the question was, well, how do, if a community member comes up and says, well, how do I get on the community? The answer is, you know, and so we want to have a process in place that we can give an answer and it's the same and fair for everybody. And so in the, at the heart of this, these two board committees are selected by the board. And so I think it makes a lot of sense that if, after an election, that a new board member would have the ability to choose that as well, whether that's the next, you know, January after that or a year from then, that at least if it aligned with that particular time period, that would allow for new board members to.
The other thing I would recommend along with that is, and it might be tough the first go, but we can figure it out, is that they stagger.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, the constant full turnovers is also hard for, you know, any group as well.
It's like every other year with those two.
Yeah.
So if it's, you know, a three- or four-year term, maybe we figure out how to lottery-ize, if that's a word, who gets one, two, and three-year terms. I don't know. We can figure that out, too. But that's just to start it, right? So we can get on a path that's, you know, everybody understands how it works and the commitment's there, the term's there. I don't know, maybe the policy committee can banter about what they think is a good term because they know the learning curve there and might have an opinion, so.
Well, then, if you think about that, then if it's a two-year term, it says, you know, two meetings are missed, individual for your move. So is that fair in a two-year timeframe?
I think you could look at that.
Like happen? I don't know, like.
Again.
All those things to think about.
I think what I heard from board leadership is that they were just looking for a commitment from community members that volunteered their time to be on these committees. And so I think that that can be negotiated.
As it stands right now, you know, we have very large committees and it's not really, it doesn't seem like it might be that important to everybody. And so we want to make sure that the people that commit to be on these committees are knowing that they're committing to be on a serious committee, that we expect you to show up and provide feedback because we rely on that. And so that's the heart behind it. So, you know, we can, we can look at that as well.
Yeah.
I like the idea of formalizing it and I like.
I don't think your mic's on.
It is.
I don't think it's working. Is it working? No.
January 4th can't get here soon enough, right?
Yeah.
Here, sorry, use my, use my hair. Gosh, mine is.
It works when I hit it, not when I talk into it.
I don't think Amy's is either.
Oh, it's working now.
Don't touch it.
Don't touch it.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, so, no, I do like the idea of formalizing. I like the example that you showed with the city so that then I called the counterparts over there just to ask, you know, how their process works. That it is not anonymous there. So just curious to get their thoughts on it because that has been an effective process for them.
Any thoughts to students being encouraged for these?
I'm always wanting to have students be part of the committees. I think they add a different voice and perspective. And it's just a really good experience.
Yeah.
I was going to say, that's how we can get like these two to find people within their buildings to be representatives, like have a student representative on these two committees, too.
PSYAC does, you know, in part, but others say off and on, maybe. So it's a good opportunity.
It's a different perspective, I'm thinking, especially on facilities.
Okay, so we have, we need to.
Yeah, we've got feedback and then we'll take it back to policy. Before we take it to policy, I'll, we'll make some adjustments to the document based off your feedback. I'll share it with the board again in my update. And then we'll, just I'll do an overview of what the process could potentially look like leading into, and this is October, leading into next month.
I have a question. If there was to be a student rep, what would their term be?
To be determined.
That would depend on what year they are in school, I would imagine.
If they're senior, then it just has to be one.
Yeah. Good point. Excellent. Well, thank you all for your feedback. Moving on to item nine, old business. May I have a motion to approve and accept the contracts and agreements as recommended?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? Josh?
This is more, I looked this up, that's why I wasn't going to bombard you with the questions, but you see a high-dollar amount for the Transition Alliance program? Maybe just elaborate for the community what that does for us?
The tab renewal process.
Hi, Transition Alliance Program. I can address the financial side of it and I might need some help from Dr. Lindemann on the programming side. But we have two full-time equivalent teachers who serve as job coaches to our special needs students and it's a coordination with Iowa Vocational Rehab. So we get a 50% reimbursement back from them for those two FTE positions. And then we have some additional associate hours that also assist with job coaching for those students.
That's a really good thing.
So just to clarify then, that number is the salaries and support staff cost?
Yes. And some, a little bit of supplies and.
Right.
Professional development, but yeah, that's the all-in. Thank you.
See any additional?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions before we? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item B, may I have a motion to approve the 2022-23 certified annual reports as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item C, may I have a motion to approve the SBRC Modified Supplemental Amount for Fiscal Year 22 Special Education Deficit of $7,400, I'm sorry, $7,44,483 as recommended?
Motion.
Questions? Dr. Pruitt, this is just a, I mean, this is just a reality that districts are dealing with. I remember, I don't remember much about numbers as it relates, but I do remember this number keeps going up and up and up. Is that, is that, do we expect to see that or how does this work?
It's dictated by the number of students that we're serving with an IEP and the services that are required based off that IEP. So I'm not going to say it's going to go up, but our, nationally, we haven't seen students with IEPs go down in our district. So I think that, this is just an issue around, because we know we have students that need special education services, how we go about serving them, beginning in pre-K through 12th grade, and then how we work for those students that are able to transition off their IEP as they matriculate through school. So I think that this is a reality as we begin to think about how we staff our special education classrooms and how we, what resources we allocate to support them.
Well, thank you for that explanation. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so new business, item 10, may I have a motion to approve and accept the policies, first of two readings as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about these policies? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item B, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing Northwest Elementary HVAC retrofit for October 17th, 2022 at 5:00 PM at Prairie Ridge Middle School, 1010 Northwest Prairie Ridge Drive as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item C, may I have a motion to approve setting the date for public hearing Southview Middle School restroom outbuilding for October 17th, 2022 at 5:00 PM at Prairie Ridge Middle School, 1010 Northwest Prairie Ridge Drive as recommended?
Motion.
Second.
Questions?
I have a question on this one. What would be the target date for completion if this should be approved?
Tim?
Target date.
Target completion date.
For the outfielding?
This is not the outfielding at the stadium. This is outfielding at Southview.
Yes, Southview, that's what I mean, yeah.
No, it's not the third phase of the stadium. This is outfielding at Southview. So just some clarity, the Southview has never had an outfielding or restroom, so with all the new protocols and safety and such, we're actually having to go in the building or renting a restroom. So this has been in the works for three or four years and be paid for out of PEP. It'll be ready probably mid-fall for down there.
Okay.
It's a smaller, it's a much smaller building than what we're going to put at the stadium north, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item 11, board member reports. Aaron, would you like to start?
Sure. Sometimes my day job hat and my school board hat collide and I got the opportunity to participate in the Future Ready Iowa Conference a couple weeks ago on behalf of Acumold, but also it's hard to take this hat off, too. And it was neat to be in a room with mostly district admins and their support staff and others, including some of our own. And it was a good day. The theme of the day is, you know, all options on the table. And we're looking at, you know, supporting students and it's kind of what we're trying to do here, you know? Put together what does the future of Ankeny look like and have our own version of that. So appreciated hearing from the different speakers. It was a good opportunity, so. That's all I have for now.
I just was with Amy at the journalism class at AHS last week. They asked us a lot of questions. One, one of the questions was, how does being a mother help us with being a school board member? And what I said was patience, because it does take patience up here and a calmness about us when we're put in difficult situations. And that's all I had. The committees I'm on start back up here in the next month, so I'll have more committee reports once those get going.
All right, committee meetings starting this week. Have calendar committee policy on Thursday, helping with the Prairie Dog Dash at Prairie Trail Elementary. So it'll be fun to see kids run around for that. And then fall parties on Friday. I know that students, teachers, parents are looking forward to those being in the classroom with their students, so. Is he weak?
Yeah.
Me and Gemma have been asked to sit on a new committee board on Wednesday to name two new buildings, which is super exciting and found to be a really cool experience.
So last week, I got to attend the second meeting of the Facilities Master Plan Committee, which I thought went really well. I'm pretty impressed with two meetings in and how well it's going. The volume of information to digest in two hours, yeah, we need probably two and a half or maybe more. But it's really good and I'm liking the collective process of the community to bring ideas forth and how that's being digested and re-presented as we go through it. Yeah, and fall parties are starting this week, so my kids are excited, so.
I got, I got not much to say other than this weekend, the Marching Hawks go to Valley Fest and we're planning to take home a second place. Very proud of us. Woo-hoo.
Would you like to go, Amy?
Sure. I just want to thank the district and Dr. Pruitt for the DEI work sessions and the format of forcing us to ask questions so we don't sit up here in silence. I really appreciate that. The journalism class at AHS was fantastic. They asked some great questions. Some of them I was not expecting, so kudos to them. School Foundation Committee 5K was great. We've received 52 applications for grants and they're being scored now, so teachers should know here in the next week or so, the outcome of that. And then from what I gather, from my 15-year-old daughter who doesn't speak a whole lot, it was two successful homecomings that we had. So congratulations on the district for that as well.
Excellent. Katie?
Just want to reiterate what Amy said. Thanks, Dr. Pruitt and the team, for the DEI work session. And I look forward to diving into it in more depth and future work sessions. Had the opportunity with Ryan to also participate in the Ankeny High School Journalism Class shortly after our last board meeting. And it was just, it was great because asked really great questions and just reminded why we do this work. And it was just so great to meet with kids, so I really appreciated that opportunity. Also participated in the Hot Jig 5K. The weather was beautiful. It was a really well-run event, so thank you to all the volunteers and coordinators who put that together. And they had some great prizes afterwards as well. So I hope, I know attendance was down this year and they were a little disappointed in that. I hope we can bring that back up in the future because it was really wonderful. So, and then I will be at policy on Thursday. That's it. Thank you.
All right. I was at the journalism class, same report. It was great. Love the questions. They had done research beforehand, which was also was fun, which probably is why we had some unexpected questions, but those were fun. I had the opportunity to sit in with Orbis. Dr. Pruitt had given some Orbis students, I think all of them actually, a challenge and their kind of their, the report on their presentation of this challenge as it relates to using, you know, the strategic plan and coming up with ideas and things like that was to present to district leadership. And so I was able to sit in on one of those and, you know, they're, what they learn and how they present is quite amazing. You know, from a marketing standpoint, I really, they put together like student profiles and how these students might, might interact in a day with curriculum, with facilities, and all these different things. And they're just really thoughtful and it was really, it was really great to hear from them some themes and some unique ideas. So that was, that was excellent. And then went to also the Orbis, the council, Leadership Council meeting to talk with them about how they're moving forward and how things are progressing. And then facilities, the master planning session, which is always, always something to go home after and fall asleep and just feel like, wow, that was a lot. But, but very, very good work being done in the district and, you know, I know it's difficult from a public perspective to not necessarily understand everything that's going on in the district. We are working on DEI. We are working on long-range facilities planning. And our strategic plan has DEI written all over it. I mean, part of the strategic plan is to use the DEI framework to create these different things. And like what everybody's saying is we are focused on what DEI means here in Ankeny, not what the national narrative is, not what a political narrative is, what it means for here, our students, and this district. And that's what I'm excited about for our strategic plan and the DEI framework. Dr. Pruitt, superintendent reporter?
I'd like to thank all of our community members, parents that have volunteered their time to participate in the Long Range Facilities Committee. In addition to the Innovative Secondary Task Force, your time is greatly appreciated. I also want to thank the members of AMIS for inviting me last Tuesday out to their meeting. They gave me a list of questions and grilled me for about an hour and a half. And so it was an enjoyable time. was an enjoyable time with that group. I'm also really proud that this year, we, we have started a process called Instructional Rounds in the district. It was, we started last week. We had 18 educators from within the district descend on Parkview Middle School last week, and we had about seven district office staff there also, in addition, included in the 18. And the sole, and the sole purpose of Instructional Rounds is to support the school leader and teachers around a problem of practice that they're working on to support students. And so we are able to get into many classrooms in different groups, observing instruction through the, through the lens of the problem of practice, and offer next-level suggestions for next level of work for the principal and his instructional leadership team. And so I'm just very thankful of the Parkview team for being our first school to experience rounds. I'm looking forward to the, the next school that we visit. We're doing eight this year. I've given Bev and Tara the challenge of wanting to do 16 next year, 23, 24, not, not next year, next year. But very, I'm looking forward to the board members joining us, I believe in November. I think it'll be a really enjoyable experience. I think eye-opening with regards to our lens around how we look at instruction and how we are wanting to support our principals and their building improvement plans moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Well, we do have a closed session, so I move that we hold a closed session as provided in Section 21.51A of the Open Meetings Law to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential, or to be kept confidential as a condition for that governmental body's possession or continued receipt of federal funds.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Director Klaus.
Senator Katie?
Director Klaus.
Oh, hey, yeah.
Director Talyerini?
Yes.
Director Powell?
Yes.
Director Bothell?
Yes.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Johnson?
Yes.
Director Walden?
Yes.
Thanks.